And that's like you guys had set that up. You know, that's your friend. You let him, well, you let him, he's got all the stuff after him. You guys let him through the metal detector. Got that on video. Everyone knows.
Oh, pizza buddy. Do you like pizza?
It's like that. Like what, why you say that?
What's your favorite pizza place?
Why you say that?
I'm asking. If you're from Boston, usually guys from Boston like pizza.
Yeah.
I like pizza. There's a new place. New place called Long Island. Long Island Brothers. Long Island Brothers Pizza Place. Put that on your YouTube channel.
Why? That's boring.
What?
That's, that's so boring. That's boring.
I'm a big, uh, I'm a big Sal's, Sal's fan. That's a big, or.
I was going.
Red Sox fans?
That's the neighborhood, man. That, I used, I lived there for like twenty, tw- twenty years. Lived there for twenty years.
Where, right in there?
Yeah, yeah, right in there, yeah, yeah.
Oh, by that line?
Yeah, you're right in there, yeah.
Boston's a beautiful city.
I'm a Vietnam veteran. I'm just a, a folksy guy. That was in Vietnam. I think we need to fix the sidewalks. I go down that lonely country. Ooh, there's news media there. Jesse. This cowboy's. See, that's the only thing I get away with, look. I think. I think that's, that's my privilege. I have like. A special privilege. There he is. Trying to get away with it. Oh, there she is. I haven't seen her in a while. Damn, man. Haven't seen her in a while, dude.
What's up, buddy?
Hello?
Hey.
I got another Boston guy right here.
Oh, yeah? What part are you from?
North Shore.
Okay.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
From up there.
Yeah.
Uh, says he goes back a couple times a year.
Huh?
Said he goes back a couple times a year.
Yeah, yeah.
Or maybe he said every few years. We should add that one.
Oh, you weren't wearing your stripes last time, were you?
I don't know. Check your video.
I know, I know.
Rewind it, see if I was.
I'm sure. So, oh, you are more, you got more of that. Wait, which is more? Like, cause you got one underneath.
No, this is the boss right here.
But, I don't know how that works. Like, when you.
The boss.
You get three and then you get to put one underneath and you start. Striking again and stuff.
Three strikes, yeah.
I like the rocker guy.
Yeah.
Coming in this time, he's staying out.
I don't know, maybe he'll come in. So you guys still letting in everyone?
No.
You stopped?
Very rigorous.
Yeah.
Screening process.
You mean with a, with a concealed carry weapons? You're not doing that now?
Oh, you never have. Not in here.
Yeah.
What? Oh, what is it then? No.
Read up on the law. You can read up on it.
I could have read one.
Yeah, we have it on the website.
No, I got it. I got it. You guys. I got it enough. I don't do some bugger. I got it. I got it when you guys let him in. I could bring one, my own detector, but it sets off metal detector and then they do a pat down. And you guys don't even.
Very rigorous.
Do it. Everyone looks, has that look on their face. That's what I figured out, cause everyone. Had that look on their face, that's all.
Look at disgust or look like?
No, like it's like.
Were you trying to do something like a watch? Look, it will see the luck on your new career. Read this book. Might launch a career.
Patty Cummins, she's so cool.
And I want all you guys signing it with me.
I don't know if I wanna, I don't wanna be.
Which one is it?
He, uh, he took a day off. He had something to do.
Okay.
He had something to do.
So right now, other Chrissies have married, right?
No, that's this Chrissie.
Did she that?
Yeah.
I bought you donuts. I didn't.
I know, I've heard of that.
This guy definitely.
I got heard of that.
She loves those things. Well, next time I'll bring them out there because those people like Roberta White, they.
I know, they look crazy, wow.
She got headshot.
Just go ahead.
Well, don't forget to give her a hundred bucks.
I was thinking about it, but I was gonna ask you for a small loan.
Okay. Sure, why not? My wallet's big. Put my house. Yeah. You need to get those ones that Chief Nuland got.
Aw, man, you don't have anything. I thought for sure it was gonna go off.
Chief Nuland got them.
Just give me your videographer.
They don't let you in, yeah.
Mr. Perry, well, Mr. Perry. Probably. I'm sure he's one of his followers.
He's going around like that.
I want to sign it though.
I want to.
I'll get Chief Nuland to sign it. I see him every two weeks.
Get, uh, Chief here to sign it.
I'll show you. I think he's gonna be up there. He's doing good. Well, I'm glad to see ya. Thought about ya.
Yeah.
Never saw my son.
You didn't see him?
No, it, it was a big. What do you wanna call it? Like a debauchery. People come, they're unlicensed, they screw up the jobs on my house and. I didn't have any insurance and I have none now.
Is your house paid off?
Yeah, I took my pension, paid it off. My wife always wanted me to do it. I'd do everything after the barn door, you know, the horse pad or.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I'm disappointed in you.
Whatever.
I was gonna bring you the donuts because they're opening again.
Yeah, I'm right here.
But you don't wanna sign.
All right, you know what? Maybe we talk about that. I'll sign it. I'll sign it.
In here.
There he is, smile. What's going on over there?
Can I stash this back? It's like, it's just like that flag for.
Yeah, that's what.
One thing. You've got some pretty cool stuff. It also has my person.
Oh.
Uh, I got something.
I got one of those already.
Yeah? Do you have the tumbler? Can you pull a tumbler?
The new one?
I'm gonna go in.
We started making, we started making.
Let's see.
As long as there's nothing in your pockets.
Yeah, remember buddy, you gotta put your phone right there.
Yeah, you gotta put it down.
You gotta put it in your, in your mail purse here.
Nothing in your, in your pockets.
I was gonna get one. I was gonna.
You just gotta take a look in there to make sure there's no weapons or anything in there.
Yeah. I wanted to get more on purses, like, cause I was, I was gonna collect.
Oh, you wanted a purse?
Yeah, you going through purses, you guys, to get you, to get you.
What about?
Cause you're going through.
Have you seen this one yet, though?
Yeah, but he doesn't go through yours.
We have, well, no, no. Oh, look, he was just going through mine, actually. We're just showing him. But we have these, these are our.
Are you Inc. News?
Uh, no, I work for the city.
Oh, God, okay.
But if you do keep a request, it's a scavenger hunt around the city, you win it.
Can you read that?
Yeah, can you get out of my stuff now? That's fucked up, man.
Look through it, make sure.
That's bullshit. You let people with guns in here.
Do we?
Yeah, yeah, I got you on video, man. You just let them, then you go through my stuff like that. That's really messed up, man. No, it isn't.
Barter policy.
No, it isn't. Not to have people with guns and then I, you know, I'm going around and you got me marked like I have nothing.
They don't want to go through stuff, they don't want to come in then.
Like, what's your name badge number?
See it right here.
What? What, I don't have to come in?
If you don't want your stuff to go through, yeah, you don't have to come in.
Yeah, I said you gotta go through other people's stuff too.
Absolutely.
You don't do it, though. Not like you haven't been around. Do they not do it in front of you? I've never seen him do it in front of you.
You hold that in front.
When you let people with guns in here? Like, I got it all over my YouTube. But I haven't, but you were here the first day. Maybe you know, they don't do it around you.
Not aware of what you're.
Yeah, okay.
You enjoy.
You might, I haven't seen it. I haven't seen you here with it.
Your pockets open.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe it's that stuff. Yeah, maybe, oh no. I got, cause you haven't been here in a while. I got you that one time. We, I was here, but then I made. I haven't seen, I haven't seen her for a while.
Which one?
Her, I haven't. Who knows, like.
I'm here pretty, pretty often.
Oh, not.
Very popular too.
I haven't seen her for a few months.
Wanna go in or you wanna stay out here?
Not yet, I gotta do that.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Yeah.
He's got like four followers?
Well, how much do I gotta get? Like, you know, if you're gonna say, I don't see you bringing guns in here. Like, I gotta stand here and tell them even more.
You can, you can fill all your.
I mean, like, what, what do you think, like?
Not seeing one gun, come in.
Yeah, 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 but you guys like let them through metal detector and you, you just like pat at them on the sides and stuff. They don't even know.
You can feel, you can feel a gun on the side.
You don't feel for, you got, you know, they gotta, you know. They got a breakaway pocket with their holster.
Oh, so.
You know that.
Two pairs of pants? There might be one in the, there might be one in the pants?
What? You mean me?
No, I'm saying.
Because if there were two pairs of pants, why are you doing that, man? What is wrong with you?
No, not, I'm saying, you said you wanna conceal a gun. You're saying if you have two pairs of pants on. People sometimes.
Well, it doesn't work if there's a metal detector, does it? So that's what we're talking about. So what are you talking about? And no, they don't wear, they don't wear two pairs, what?
I'm sorry?
What are you saying? What did you say?
You're always so pleasant and nice, but now you're a little argumentative today and a little mean and sour.
Oh, this, you don't, you don't know, you gotta watch my, you gotta watch my YouTube, you gotta watch my YouTube.
We'll check it out.
We'll, we'll check it out.
Let's see this guy. This guy, okay, are you really from Lawrence?
No, I'm not from Lawrence.
Oh, where are you from?
From the next town over.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes. So what's the deal with like, you know, Patty Cummins that day? When, when she was, um, what is it, March fifteenth? You weren't here. They, um.
Rewind the video. I don't know if I was here March fifteenth. Was that Saint Patrick's Day? It was Saint Patrick's Day.
No, when, when, I think it's March fifteenth when they, when they voted to send her naughty papers up to the investigator, remember?
What happened with the naughty papers?
Well, they, I, that Vicky Sprout, they, they, they decided to hire an investigator. And so Patty Cummins had her three witnesses here. And, uh.
She has to actually tell someone she has died.
So like, you know, I mean, when you, when you guys set up Patty Cummins, um, you know what they did? You watch my video, you'll see it. Like, maybe you don't know. If you're not here, they, um, yeah, I know. So I'm telling you, yeah. Yeah, so you don't wanna hear it, right?
Not when I'm working.
Just write.
Yeah, it's, it's actually probably a crime.
That way she knows, she can look it up later.
Yeah, she don't care. I'm angry for you.
She has a lot of followers.
Who? On your internet, man, the whole thing's fake here. You guys are all fake.
Internet totally fake.
You're all fake. You guys with the internet. You guys, this is, um, everything.
You ever hear of fake news?
Well, that's what this place is, um. Because you guys have that, it's.
You're missing some good news feed in there.
She's getting an award, that's pretty.
Oh, really? Did they do the, the, what, what is that? What followers?
Your followers are gonna love that.
What followers?
I don't know who your followers are.
Yeah, they had on Patty Cummins, um. These people told her that, um. Someone's stalking her here and they had tried to kill her twice. Like, um, I, it's on video, I got it. And you were standing right there. I mean, she was telling you. And it's like. And then, um.
Congratulations.
So it's, you know, and then they don't, they don't take it serious, cause they know it's fake. They know it's fake. And so either those three people are setting her up like that, you got more fake friends, or those three people. Are, uh, they were actually being threatened. You know, Chief of Police knows it, Seismore's in on it. You know, the, the paramedics guy is in on it. Um. You guys had that same detective guy here too. You know, the, the one that wears those like underoos, like sleeves? Like, he's got, like, they, these compression sleeves with big pads. You know, and he has little things like a, like a teenage girl, like a strap that goes around. And he, and he's, uh. You know what I mean, right?
I don't know, I don't know. I've never seen anybody with underoos.
Yeah, underoos. They call it the Under Armour, Under Armour sleeves. Call it underoos. So, so what happened then with, um, Patty Cummins set her?
I have zero idea what happened with Patty Cummins.
Well, you guys, you guys didn't take it serious, like, her, um. She said her friends, you guys were smirking, you were smirking about it. Chief Seismore was smirking, cause you guys know it was fake, right?
You should ask the cops.
See what they did? They opened up the metal, they let these people in with their concealed carry and people think they get privileged. And they're all coming in here and they're setting up some stuff. Um, you know, Patty Cummins went to January sixth and, uh.
Patty, Patty Cummins was up on January sixth?
You, you know that, dude, you're with the feds, man. Or, or you're gonna, it's gonna be like that. If anything comes down, I know what, uh, it's gotta work like that, right?
I'm sorry?
It's gotta work like that, right? Uh, if they catch your criminal stuff, it's gonna be. You were talking to feds anyway. You know, I mean, you're, you're, well, that, that's the way they do it around here.
It might be a little different than when you grew up in Boston.
No, it's nothing like Boston.
The whitey, the whitey, uh, olden days, right?
Well, yeah, from South Boston, yeah.
Yeah, you were around the whitey days, right?
Everything, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a little different.
We've, yeah, yeah, they take out, um.
What about the Lucchese family?
What?
What about the Lucchese family?
There's no such thing. There's no such thing. That's on news media. It's, um, no, there's no such thing.
Look up the Lucchese family.
Man, that's all British intelligence. It's all this fake stuff. You know, they got, the, the British intelligence took over everything. You know, British intelligence took over after they hit Lord Mountbatten. And had that victory, uh, in nineteen seventy-nine. That's what happened to Boston. That's why you have Jeffrey Epstein. That's why you have all that stuff. British intelligence and they do it quiet, they do it quiet. Huh?
Was that before the island? Epstein's island?
Yeah, yeah, that's why you have Epstein up there.
I think Epstein had that island after nineteen.
Yeah, I know, I know. Seventy-niners when British intelligence started to focus hard on Boston and they came in.
Like Churchill? Like which, British intelligence, like?
British, yeah, MI six, all that, you know, the whole thing, just, um. And that's why you have Jeffrey Epstein. They have their own prince.
Lucchese.
Huh?
I would look into the Lucchese.
Yeah, it's all fake. There's nothing. It's all sealed up now. It's like. Like, you guys are, there's, uh, this thing, I think, they keep it. They keep it cleared out. You don't have any foreign, foreign intelligence in here.
We have foreign people.
You don't have foreign intelligence. You know, they have MI six.
Oh, those guys.
That's what's going on up in Boston. They let them in, or they're just in there.
Yeah, they're deep undercover.
That guy, that guy is like.
He's interviewing when he comes out, he's your guy.
Oh, my God, I know.
He's you without the camera.
I don't know, reading from script. Just throws it out, all whatever you guys fed to him to put, to read, or your guy.
Sometimes you have to read by script.
The guy's with the good shoes, right?
I'm sorry?
Those guys with the good shoes.
Good shoe?
I don't know, what, you know, the, the good shoes. No, no, the guy's with a.
What, those are Chucks?
No, the E, E Howard Hunt. You know who that is?
Is he MI six?
No, that's like Nixon, the one at Watergate Park, there's guys that set him up.
Crazy Lucchese though.
Yeah. Yeah, so what they did, they, um, they had Patty Cummins, they had her all running around on a tear. They just voted to. You know, s- hire Vicky Sprout, that inter, that investigator. And then, um, so they had Patty Cummins all on a tear, these guys did. Like, uh. Telling her that, um, well, these people telling her that there's someone stalking them here. And so Patty Cummins was complaining to you about it. She said.
Spoken a word to Miss Cummins.
I got it on video. She said they tried to kill her twice. I got it recorded and we're standing, all standing there. And then I said, oh, did she say, and you, you said, so, oh, it's like not that, or. Misconstrued, you know, and then she goes to talk to Chief Seismore.
A lot of people get me mistaken with other, another guy.
No, okay. But that's all lies, you know, you're just, you're standing right there with her. So, so like, you gotta just do that, right? That's what they did, man. So either that, like getting her set up like that, that's gotta be a crime, right?
Good, I don't, I don't deal with that sort of.
And then if those three people are real friends or they're fake friends, if they're fake friends, okay, that's set her up. If they're, you know, no, people, they, they get, like, you know, they set her up.
Read the email, right?
If those are, if those people are for real, that means that they've been made to think there's a stalker out after them. Um, but your answer is expected is that way. And so that's gotta be a crime, right?
Should be.
Yeah. And you guys had the same, you had the same detective in here.
Which one? The one with the, the big, lethal?
He's, he's got this hat. Red hat, right? Yeah, red hat. You know, the Hispanic guy, red hat, like he goes around, um, he's got his weapon concealed carry. Uh, he's got his, um, he's got his Under Armour, um, sleeves, like these. Compression sleeves with the pads and, and he's got a thing that goes over the thumb and he goes in there, he sits in the back. And he's got his computer. And he had come for that other thing too. You guys had done, like, a couple of weeks before.
I'm gonna have to search.
Yeah, yeah, it's on there, it's on there, like.
So it's on your YouTube?
Yeah.
Which one's it on? Which one?
It's on, you know, it's that day, you know, one before. So, uh.
And there's so many of us that work this detail, but it wouldn't have you.
But you weren't.
I have a red hat, though.
You weren't here, man.
Like a uni?
Yeah, but that's what you guys do, man. What? Hey, you shouldn't be doing that, so.
Hi.
I don't know. Like, she wasn't there for that, was she? No, you weren't there for either of those. You weren't there for the stuff, uh, uh, see, maybe you're like. It's kind of a coincidence, right?
People make off.
Yeah, maybe you don't let her know, right? Trying to think, yeah. Yeah, maybe she doesn't know. Doesn't know quite like that. That's what it is. That's why, um, yeah, they're so, they're setting her up. Like that. That guy, the same guy, he, so he come like the two weeks before, when you guys had that, um, there's this guy that came in. Oh, man, I got it on my video. He came in, I got him going through metal detector and you guys let him in. And then he goes up there, he goes to the podium and he does this big talk. He's, oh, the police are getting me, trying to get me. The FBI is coming after me. There's like fake pe- there's people, you know, coming after me. And that's like you guys had set that up. You know, that's your friend. You let, well, you let him, he's got all the stuff after him. You guys let him through the metal detector. Got that on video. Everyone knows, man.
Pizza buddy, do you like pizza?
It's like that. Like what, why you say that?
What's your favorite pizza place?
Why you say that?
I'm asking. If you're from Boston, usually guys from Boston like pizza.
Yeah.
I like pizza. There's a new place. New place called Long Island. Long Island Brothers. Long Island Brothers Pizza Place. Put that on your YouTube channel.
Why? That's boring.
What?
That's, that's so boring. That's boring.
I'm a big, uh, I'm a big Sal's, Sal's fan. That's a big, or. Two Chiefs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, they had that.
Ever hear of that?
Yeah.
Ever hear of two Chiefs?
Yeah.
Where's it from?
Oh, wait, is that Boston?
Up, where, what part of?
Like the, the Fenway?
Yeah, Fenway.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going there. I was going.
Red Sox fans?
That's the neighborhood, man. That, I used, I lived there for like twenty, tw- twenty years. Lived there for twenty years.
Where, right in Fenway?
Yeah, yeah, right in there, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you're right in there, yeah.
Boston's a beautiful city.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, I live right in there, yeah. My lost, my lost twenties and all that. My lost twenties. Yeah, yeah, like my lost twenties. My kids were born there too. Then we moved out to Dorchester.
My kids, you got them?
Huh? Like, two.
You got two kids?
Yeah. Yeah, the Fenway's interesting. They had that, I was there when they raided it after nine-one-one.
They raided?
The, the, yeah, yeah, the, the, no, no, they raided, um, cab company. No, the cab company, the Boston Cab Company's right there.
Boston Cab?
Yeah, so the FBI raided them. They, they hit that thing big with all the SWAT teams and stuff. And there's like, there's some of the guys in there, the guys that knows the guys that are in there. I got, I took a cab ride home with one of them once. And, um, and then, you could tell, this dude, this Arab dude, he's like, um. It was great, man. And he's thinking about making a turn across traffic and he doesn't do it. That guy was smooth, you know? Boston's a place, Boston's a place where these guys come from because you can, um. These guys can walk down the street alienated, but still, like, totally gets other, they're like, uh. You can totally become Americanized.
No, you, I asked him. I said, Officer Chris said you wanna sign. You're in trouble. I'm gonna break you down like the army.
You're not supposed to throw me in there like that.
Well. Here's your last chance. He ran it though. He said, where he is, he said, he doesn't fit in here. Who knows?
There's a lot of things in this building that don't fit in.
Well, that's true, I'm sure. So, you're not, you're not gonna pass around the crew, not this time. If the other Chris was here. Where's the other Chris? Took the day off. Yeah, maybe somebody was gonna be here or something.
Okay, it's time for a scene.
I get down and drunk, but I've been feeling a little better, Nate Allen came to see me. Oh, he's a nice kid, huh? He's a fellow USA, USA credit too. Came to see me. I hadn't even known him. From high school, my son. There's a bunch of people over there, mutual friend, and he came over, and then I think that's his mom.
Okay, there's no one here, so, like, everything I've been saying, maybe they don't let you hear for the stuff. It's like the whole crew is like, that'd be so funny.
I think so.
It's like a whole different scene.
You, you need thirty-three. She needs thirty-three. She needs thirty-three? Are your grandfather in? Me? It's starting a little before her. Okay, I mean, thirty years any day, and they don't do that anymore. Oh, yeah? It's thirty-three for a teacher in age. Yeah. Good thing you got that. Yeah, you know what they said, something told me, pensions, you know, just gone away with obsolescence, nobody gives you pension, or except maybe the city, the police, the firemen, the teachers.
Can I ask you-
It works, and we pay three percent now, or the teachers do, and they weren't supposed to do that.
Can I ask you about Vietnam? Can I ask you something about Vietnam?
Well, fucking answer it.
Yeah, did you guys, did you guys do stuff at night, or did you? At night, did you do stuff at night?
Speaking of good here, buddy.
At, at the nighttime, did you go out at nighttime?
No, it wasn't, I, I didn't, you know, some of the guys did, it depends on where you wanna go, like if you wanted to party or something.
No, I mean, I would go, go hunting, like you're fighting, you're not just staying in the camp.
Yeah, did a lot of guard duty, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I wanna keep asking these guys before everyone gets too old, like-
I know.
I used to, um-
But look at now, they make our clothes, they're all friends.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They told us we were gonna defeat communism.
Yeah. I've been watching, I think it was a setup from the beginning, I think they did, they did want it, just run it in the opposition with CIA too, just like everyone says, like the, the, the college protests, they, they're gonna play both sides.
Cold war mentality. That's what it was, and then, and we still got problems now. This is pre-World War Three, instead of the Japanese, and I was born in World War Two, we got the Chinese, still got the Russians. What a mess.
Yeah.
I would have hoped in seventy-eight years, before I checked out of the planet, that we would uh, have improved, but we haven't, and in fact, I think we're doing worse. That's my guy, he's, he's gonna get promoted. Say good things about him.
Oh, yes. Oh, dear, what's he gonna get promoted to?
You gotta say good things about me, he's live with a Okay.
Yeah.
YouTube following. YouTube? Yeah, I don't know if you know what it is.
No, it's like, no.
I just learned what it was too. As long as it isn't X or TikTok. No, 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 no. Or M's. No, no, I highly, I highly doubt that he's got the gram. So, what we knew of Roberta didn't buy this. She just broke into between the night, like. I just saw today, I saw. No, didn't you, we saw on, we saw Tuesday, and she's like, hey, I just saw you, I did this.
So how are you guys with, like, women on the force, is, how is this place great, do you guys have a about average, or not as many women as other?
No, we have a, quite a few.
Is it about, like, average?
Probably more than average.
Like, do you ever think about, don't, shouldn't they push that, like, you know, that's one of the the last frontiers, you know, feminism, you can have, it ought to be fifty percent, right?
Yeah, I think we're pretty equal, we, we're just-
I mean, I mean fifty percent women on the force, on the faceless.
Absolutely. All right, listen, we'll keep in touch. I will, I'll see you all, all the time. Yeah, I'll get you some guys and dogs. Been seeing you again. Yeah, and uh, you hurt my feelings, though. I know, I do that, I tend to do that with a lot of people. All right, I'm not gonna send anything to Roberta then, since she didn't invite me, I'll give it to you. If, if the chief would've signed it, I would've signed it, you know, we gotta, we gotta follow his lead. He don't have a son. That's why they call him the leader, if he follows his lead, if he doesn't. At least he did. You know what? They didn't like money. It was supposed to be funny, that satire. Maybe like, like, your sense of humor doesn't die as well, like that. I liked it. My father always said, Louis, I like your jokes, always said that much. When they called me Louis, because it was for me. Oh, yeah. And go, they mean Louis. All right. I'll let you guys go, I gotta take you out now, and you'll watch it, and you'll go poop, because Sam freaked out so much, he sneezed. He's got like coma. It's a fat tissue. Let me tell you, I'm gonna take him and check him again, but it's benign. And, and he's looking, see, he don't feel it, but kind of makes you worry about it, see, it's fat tissue. Are they gonna take it out or not? I don't know, he doesn't want it anymore, he said he's too old. And uh, he don't wanna put it in anesthesia, it's like people, if he's allergic to it, he's done, but he's twelve. Still got some weight there. Yeah, he still does, he wasn't thinking too hard, he wasn't, all right, we gotta go. All right. See you next time, buddy. All right, we will.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's hardly anyone here, where's all the rest of the cops and stuff?
They are doing cops stuff.
See, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a couple downstairs, I wanna, wanna see where they're going. There's two, they probably are a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they're giving out food at the police department.
Oh, they are.
Yeah. I saw, I saw, I saw them at Publix there.
So what are you gonna be, is like more of a sergeant or something?
Me?
You're gonna get promoted?
Dude?
Oh, I thought, oh, he just says that, right? Oh, do you have, what is that right there? Is that pliers or a knife?
What are you talking about?
The, the thing in your pocket, the clip.
Oh, the badge?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a badge.
No, the clip, the thing.
Oh, the clip?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. What do you think it is?
You don't know.
I know when I put on my, my vest, what do you look at? You were, you were very close.
I just said one thing, pliers or a knife?
No, you were very close.
What, pliers or a knife, which one, what is it?
Which one do you think, does it look like a, a set of handles, like pliers or what?
I don't know.
Yeah, it could be the other thing.
Yeah.
Does Officer Bush have anything? Does she have a set of pliers, or a knife on hers?
Yeah. I'm just thinking.
Oh, it's a pen, is it a pen?
The only way I could ever figure stuff out, I'd get it on video and I study it, if it's just like this, I can't, and you gotta turn the sound off too. You gotta, and then, and then it won't, it won't bug you too. You get, yeah, you get it with the sound off, to figure everything out. Yeah, yeah.
You're missing some good footage in there, man.
Yeah. Now there's your own.
Where else do you go besides here? Where you go to video plays?
Oh, like the sheriff.
Oh, the sheriff? To the substation, or to the actual sheriff's office?
Well, I'd go to the gun range.
Well, that's not his office, that's the gun range.
I know, that's the gun range, Lee County Sheriff Gun Range.
Yeah, yeah, he's got his name all over it.
It's a thing, man, wow, that's cool, I did the perimeter. He's, um, okay, so, at first, well, I cussed him out, I said, like, you know, the thing is, he puts some-
Which one, like Scott?
The sheriff, the sheriff, the sheriff, 'cause he's, um, he talks to stuff, like people are oxygen stealers, and he had all those guys get killed in jail, like, when I was looking at this, I guess it was, like, statistics for, for, um, October, by October twenty-two, so something like twelve guys had died, like something like that, eight black guys, uh, two white guys, four Hispanics, something like that, I'm not, I'm not getting it exactly right, and then there's really bad stuff, like, the, the one dude had a bag, um, it's supposed to be a spit guard, and then he dies, and so I'm thinking if he gets really wet, it'll like, uh, 'cause I was on these guys up in Boston, they were having some guys die, they just die in a holding cell, and then they start to lock it in, and, you know, and they'll let the ventilators break, and for COVID, they'll break it even more, and then you're in there with the carbon dioxide, and you know, you, you know, it makes you stressed and and bother you, okay, and that's why, you know, so they're, and, um, and now no one's allowed to do a chokehold anymore, if you actually study what a chokehold is.
Which chokehold?
A chokehold, a chokehold's just supposed to be clean, it cuts the oxygen off, you go like, boom, you get that vein. It's what?
It's frowned upon.
It's what?
Frowned upon.
Yeah, I know, but it's, um, that's nothing like, um, blocking the airway, if you block someone's airway, what happens is you get a carbon dioxide buildup, and they're gonna fight, they're gonna go down, and you're gonna have someone, you might, they might be, I, I think maybe unconscious, they might still be cussing his stuff.
Sound like you done.
No, I've, like, I've, I've thought about this.
Defensive tactics, did you train you?
No, I thought about it, I thought about it, 'cause they, they, they get these guys killed, they kill them with carbon dioxide. I got this sign, it says, carbon dioxide asphyxia, motherfucker, and I, and I bring that around, I brought it to the coroner, the coroner's dirty, okay? The coroner's dirty, they're gonna put a pillow over your head when you're old, that's what they do, what do they do to the mayor? What happened with the mayor? Whatever the mayor, you just went to Lee Hospital and you dropped dead. You know, they don't even care, they don't even care, there's nothing, there's nothing, you know, down the memory hole.
We are. They need a good defensive tactics instructor. Did you know any, buddy?
Yeah, so the, so the sheriff, like, he's also a former wrestler, and so I think they have some slippage, they're, they're messing around, or he lets it, like, they, they mess around with people. And in wrestling, you know, you get people claustrophobic, and you panic them, but I think, if you, if you clog the airway, you get a carbon dioxide buildup, so when people go unconscious, they're still fighting, and you won't know, by the time they, they comply and stop, you might, they might, might be it. Right, it's not, like a chokehold just cut the oxygen off, and people stop, I think. But, so they've been slipping, they've been, or they were, and then the, the, the sheriff, he says, oxygen stealers have no right to breathe clean air, he does this, does these statements. But he's also a former wrestler, so, I'm thinking that some of his stuff is just coming out, you know what I mean, 'cause like, you, you get in that panic, claustrophobic cold.
Like a wrestler like, like-
He's like a kid, you know? That's all a setup, man, that's all a deep state, he's friends with Hannity, they just put him in there, that's all good cop, bad cop, and it's all to discredit everyone.
Hacksaw Jim Duggan.
Yeah, so you have no options. It's just the way you guys threw the mud down here, what?
The Hart Brothers?
Huh, I don't know anything about that. But yeah, I'm done with sheriff.
Yeah, she's the one that jumped off the, the top of the cage, and was stunned.
Oh, so no more Hart Brothers?
Yeah, one's gone. That was all the poor wrestlers, though. Back in the nineties.
WWE?
Yes.
No, WWE, yeah.
F, worldwide, yeah.
Yeah. So she doesn't know, does she?
She doesn't, not know. That's why she's breathing out.
Yeah, I guess she'll, yeah. 'Cause they don't let you in here when it's, they're doing stuff, like, in my experience, and today is like, quiet.
You're not a city employee, so.
I mean, they don't put you on duty when it's a thing, and then they got them all stacked up, you have Chief, Chief Siz wearing it, that, um, the paramedic's chief, that guy's all the way, that guy's a thing. And he's like- I watch it, I just have to watch.
Who do you like, who do you, who do you like?
Oh.
Give us a name.
Well, Patty Cummings.
You like her, nothing, you're just talking all kinds of things about her.
What did I say, I didn't say anything.
Uh-huh, remind you.
She's the only real person here, she's accidental. She came from Illinois.
Oh. I thought Illinois, people come out, Chicago and Boston, they're supposed to class.
Yeah, really, it's not, she's not from Chicago.
Oil and water.
She's not Chicago, she's still Midwest. Yeah.
And maybe like deep dish pizza.
No, the, the way she is, it's like the Illinois playgrounds, there's a certain culture, it's like Midwest in Illinois. As far as she's coming from. But, uh, I don't know, I like the mayor, actually.
Really?
'Cause like, I edit a lot of videos, and I turn the sound off, and it's like, you know, that's like my own thing, you know, 'cause it's like, uh, that's what I expected, and when I kinda came down to the deep south, I want that, you know, some of it, right? I don't want just some, some ratchet, like, guys corrupt, like, coming up from.
Did you say ratchet?
Yeah, I say ratchet, that's what I do with white cops, that's my term, yeah, I'm, I'm making it for-
Is that in like Urban Dictionary?
Yeah, it's, it's Urban Dictionary, yeah, usually it's, um, black chicks will say it against- A ratchet, a cop's ratchet, he's like really ratchet, it's, you know, like the sheriff, you, you go out to the, sometimes you go to the sheriff headquarters.
You don't have to use cops' ratchet.
Ratchet, no, that's what I use it on, I use it on white cops, white guy cops, 'cause it's hilarious. 'Cause it's, yeah, it's, it's funny, 'cause it's not-
On white cops?
Yeah, 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 'cause it's a term, it's a ghetto term.
Oh.
So I, I've liberated it. Yeah.
I'm jaded, but.
Yeah. 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 Yes, the stuff happened to me and my family up in Boston, that's why I got into this. Like, that I got really good at it. I'll see you later, you have a, have a nice time.
Good night.
Good night. My cowboy life is so hip, being free. She doesn't know, you know, she doesn't know. Oh, there's that guy. Uh, so what are you in?
NBC two.
Oh, okay, oh, God, you look so much different than Wink News, it's so refreshing.
Oh, yeah.
There's it, yeah. All right. And we got these guys. Hold on, let me do this. And then I'll be done. Gotta get you guys, I was gonna do this, can you guys open your windows and I'll do this, oh, you don't have another guy there? Oh, there's, I thought you guys were talking. I thought you guys were talking, I thought you had another one in there, and then if she had your windows open, I could, I haven't done that before. You know the cops do that, right?
Yeah, I've, I've seen.
And then, um, like, I, well, if you can get another cop in here, out here, you can roll, he can roll this window down, you guys can have a conference. And I'll make a video, I'm just joking, man, I'm kinda winding up for the day.
Huh?
I'm kinda winding down for the day, I was just doing them upstairs.
Okay.
Yeah. How's your day going?
All right, it's almost over.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. It's quiet here, there's not much going on. Like all the, all this stuff. Let's, see you later. My cowboy life is so happy and free. Oh, it is, man. Ow, ass. Jesus, man. That's what that is. Yeah, I'll turn it off again.